All right, we'll call this a regular council meeting to order Monday, Monday. Well, welcome everybody first, but Monday, May 19th, 2025, 5:01 PM. Questions, turn your cell phones down and rule call, please.
Commissioner Aylman.
Here.
Commissioner Edelman.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Prudential.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The maid standing, please.
My father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. And just grateful, Lord, as I drive by the garden hotel area that seeing grass starting to pop up on that site. And so we're just grateful, Lord, for your blessings and just ask you'd give the council wisdom tonight as they discuss the issues on the agenda in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
No, I feel like we should high five out of her.
Okay.
Amen.
Approval agenda, get a motion, please.
Someone say.
There's no alterations or anything. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, public comment. Anybody want to stand and talk? Quick, Randy, please.
Yeah, Randy Peterson, this is for Randy. First, I guess I got a question. Do we have an ordinance rule or whatever? Do we get a credit for like when we fill our pools with our garden hose? Do we get a credit on our sewer bill right now? Is there anything in place?
Um, what's in place right now is that if somebody purchases a new pool, they, for the very first time, they fill it, they'll give them a credit for filling it, but not topping off or anything like that.
Well, thank you.
Or if they replace a line or something, that's not included.
Okay, and so lifelong, 63 years living in South Illinois, we had this, you did away with our meters. I opened my pool and I filled it up. Now, I'm gonna next month pay the pretty big water bill from Illinois America, and then I'm gonna pay City of South Illinois the month after for sewer service that I'll never receive. I'll never receive a sewer bill or sewer service for the water I put in my pool. Okay, so when you did away with the meters, I was here at that and I argued against it, stated my facts. Ryan, Mayor Tom, Sonya, he told me that you were working on a plan. You're gonna work out something to make it beneficial so getting rid of the meters wouldn't hurt a citizen. Now, I'm a couple of years later and I don't have a plan. I don't have no, no way of when I open my pool, it's gonna cost me a ton of money that I receive no service. My grandkids play in this pool. I open it up. Why, why don't I get a credit for that? You're not servicing the water that will never see the city sewer point.
Yeah, I first, yeah, I remember talking about that, but I haven't remembered anything since that. You're, okay.
I've been waiting, I've been biding my time, but we're a couple of years later and that was told to me by you three. I, I speak back in a minute.
I would say that the best way to handle this was whatever your average sewer bill is and then, you know, go from there, you know, whatever, because whatever your average water bill is and then take what that month is and then the next month subtract for sewer, because you're not using the sewer. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, you might have to pay the water, but I don't believe the sewer.
I know I have to pay the water. I did purchase the water, but I, I'm just kind of like, wait a minute here. I'm not receiving those city sewer. Can we do some maybe average for that?
Yeah, I, I like that idea, yeah.
I can, I can try to button this up right there. So there have been a couple of different things that have been thought about at a staff level, Randy, and we can probably follow back and circle it with more information. But I know that the number one priority on Jeff's list is to try to get some actual meters out and about in the community so that the people who want to have an accurately recorded measurement of the water being used in the sewer going out, that we can actually get our own reads. And I, I know that Jeff has done a lot of homework on figuring out what those meters would cost, but that's been his number one option. But in terms of finding a way to credit, you know, periodic topping off of pools and things like that, or even watering your garden, you know, this board determined that that was kind of a luxury, that if you chose to water, if you chose to top off your pool or have a pool, that some of that means that we have a one-time emergency credit and we have that filled credit. So there are a couple of places, you know, and there's a couple mechanisms in place to catch the big things, but there isn't really a way to accurately, Jeff, I know we're really going off on the public comments argument, but Jeff, is there anything else on your list other than?
When we determine about the enormous cost to fill a pool to the 30,000 gallons, you know, you're talking $315, $320, but when you're tapping off at 1,000 gallons or 2,000 gallons, we're talking $20.
Yeah, but we're, we're.
The luxury, the cost of the swimming pool before water is way more per year than $20.
Right, but while he's talking about, he don't mind paying it to put, to top it off and pay all that.
We're talking about sewer, not water.
The sewer part, that's the problem.
But, but are you guaranteed that they're not backwashing into our sewer?
How can you do that? I mean, if you got.
Just plummet to your drain in your house.
We're getting away.
I know, but I want to know this here. I want to find out about how we can handle this.
Do you want to put it as a discussion item on the future agenda? We can do that on the next meeting, right?
Yeah, let's get this.
We talked about it in public, right?
I hope you understand my plight here.
Yeah, we do, we do understand.
And, you know, and I'm a, I'm, I'm still working. A senior citizen that wants to provide a pool for their grandchildren, either above ground, whatever, it's like, that's a, that's quite a cost that they should have to incur.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
I was under the impression that there was gonna be, there was gonna be some behind the scenes.
We should have said something earlier than this, but yeah, that, like I said, the, the problem, and I remember the statement, it's a luxury to have a pool, but I don't believe you should put water in the pool and have to pay that water bill for sewer when it doesn't go in sewer. And you say backwashing. Yeah.
I don't know.
I know, I'm, this is.
This is an immediate.
Can I talk to you after the meeting?
Okay.
All right, all right, thanks. But, any bell? Okay, yeah, we'll get, we'll get into this here. Thanks. No, I don't, yeah, well, it is. All right, we're done. Moving on.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. If you want to make a public comment, all you have to do is stand up, state your name, and make a public comment. He's not cutting you off. Public comment.
Well, you, you have to raise your hand. No, you have to raise your hand to get a public comment.
I was going to stand up and do that when you pointed that, and you're like, you have nothing to say.
All right.
I was just a middle of it, but I went on.
If you'd like to make a public comment, now is your opportunity.
Yeah, Susan Miller, and I feel the same way as Randy does. Whether I have a small pool for my dogs, or whether I want to water my grass, or I have a garden, so I'm providing food for my family, for myself, it shouldn't, you shouldn't, you're not running that through the sewer. What, I mean, why did the meters get taken away in the first place? That was.
There were a lot of problems with them, that's why. There was a lot of problems billing and there was a lot of problems keeping them working and fixed and everything else, because that's, it, it was.
So that's our fault?
No, but see, that, not every city does that. You know, this, that's just, we had it, but now we don't. Thank you. All right, approval of the claims for paid.
We need the minutes to.
Oh, the minutes, approval of the minutes, regular council meeting held on May 5th, 2025.
Motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of claims paid, May 3rd through 16th, 2025. Get a motion, please.
Motion in the amount of $363,610.
Tracy, please.
Commissioner Aylman.
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prudential.
Yes.
Yes, attorney's report.
No report this evening.
No report. Okay, Sonya, your reports.
Yes, Mayor, I just have one thing that I want to try to present to the council, and that was this document we picked with you. On the front, it says 2025 was the improvement notes for the capital project, $350,000. We knew when we budgeted this, this money that there was about $2 or $3 million worth of improvements that we could make at Eastern, Perry, and Donner Drive. And now this is kind of the start of, you know, we start to have some decisions that we need to make. So Commissioner Prudential has been heavily involved in the process up to this point, and I think he's going to kind of, you know, present a bit more direction of what he thinks makes the most sense at the next meeting. But for now, I just wanted to give this document out. It has the three different facilities broken up into, Eastern Avenue was on the first page, and the second page has Perry and Donner Drive, and then the third page is just kind of a timeline of events of different things we've been, you know, juggling. The green items are items that we believe that we could do in-house if we have to, so those are kind of at the bottom of each list. And the things that are struck out and have italics and bold at the bottom of each page, those are things that we have already spent out of this $350,000. So really, it's just kind of a, take this home, chew on it, please digest it. We're at that point where we probably need to have some real decisions made on how we want to best spend this money. So no decisions to be had today. It's really just a, you know, take this with you. Please feel free to ask questions and chew on it. And I think Commissioner Prudential will, uh, will kind of have some more comments at the next meeting to kind of keep our vote afloat.
Yeah, I, only thing I'll add to that is for those of you that bought a house and you get a home inspection, you open it up, you're like, oh my God, my house is gonna fall apart. This is the absolute wish list. So don't read this list and get scared. This is the absolute everything list. It will be cut back and it will be modified, but this is the everything list. So that's it for now.
And really, that's all I've got. Tonight's our staff report. We've got Shama. I'm trying to save as much space for her as I can, because she is now going to share her quarterly report with Brandon. So on this quarter, you'll have kind of half of an engineering update and half of a community development that are very closely connected. So Brandon can kind of jump in and share Shama's rotation.
Okay, so for my quarterly, quarterly report, development and new construction, we still have some of the ones that we mentioned last quarter that are breaking ground and still in the works. A new one is flying J. They're doing an interior remodel and they're adding EV charging stations. American Extrusion is building a new building. They scaled down the building that they were going to build and redid their plans, and they're also putting in a new parking lot. Storage Queen, they've now broke ground for phase two of their construction, so they're in the works. Other things that I've been working on, I attended the Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful ribbon coating, the Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful Award Ceremony on Earth Day. They honor nature at the Confluence, Dirk Julie Eerdom. I have been working with outsider consulting for leadership training. Chief Truman and I, along with the Street Department, Steve and his guys, have been attending the Memorial Day Parade Planning with the Lloyd. I've attended the Region One Planning Meeting, the Police Memorial Breakfast for the PCC. We've been holding regular meetings. Upcoming is for the next few months until October, starting in July. We will, actually, correction, starting this month, and then we will skip next month and then continue in July. We noticed on the zoning map, when it was rolled out, there are quite a few areas that didn't get corrected that like we were hoping with the zoning rewrite. So we are going through and doing bulk map amendments to get that corrected. This month, we'll be doing 44 properties along the north and south sides of the 600 block of Ingersoll Place, 200 blocks of South Park and South Harrison, both on east and, and west sides of the street. This will take the multifamily residential, which are 99% of the residential parcels over there are zoned right now currently at multifamily residential. That means if those properties, if anything happens to those properties and they have to rebuild those homes, they're not able to under the current zoning, because they don't fit in a zoning classification that's conducive to their use or their lot size. So as we were looking at a property owner that came forward and wants to do some remodel on her, her property, that's how it was noticed. And when I spoke to the attorney Miller, we decided, we looked at a little bit broader area, these three streets, and we noticed there were 44, 44 properties that fit this and needed to be rezoned. So they're gonna be rezoned from the multifamily residential to the R2A. So that'll be a two-family residential property with a subsection of a classification A that's just in the smaller areas, or I'm sorry, the smaller lots in the older areas of town. They have subsections to have different specifications. So the lots are, they're still, it's still a single-family or a two-family home, you being able to be classified as that, but it's on a smaller lot, so it's conducive to that specific area. So that's what that will all be. And then there are other areas throughout the city that also need attention. Those will come between now and October. And then every year, the, your zoning map has to be published. So then by March of 2026, we'll have that new zoning map published, and we'll be working with Fairgram to get that finalized. Um, let's see what else. Um, there will be no PCC next month in June. We're gonna give everybody a break while we work on the rest of these bulk map amendments. So we didn't have, we thought it was a perfect time since we don't have any submissions for the PCC from any outsiders, so we're gonna take the break, get everything collected, and then pick up in July, through July, or July through October, excuse me. Another really heavy hitter right now is permit, permit reviews. As of right now, I think there are between 50 and 75 permits that we are working on that have been submitted. We're not real sure, we weren't real sure how, why this uptick in permits came until we realized that the contual payments have gone out and that could be part of it. There, there are quite a few. And with this, also remember that sometimes legal has to jump in zoning and engineering along with themselves, so that's, that kind of eats up a lot of that. This is roughly about 25 hours a week that we're spending on permit reviews, and that's not going into the weeds if anything needs to be corrected or anything. We're always working on, and I'm always working on annexations, code enforcement. I do have, as you know, municipal code enforcement is working on our code enforcement cases. We have had them now since February. We are averaging three to six cases a month, and those are the cases that go over here, not to mention the cases that we get declined on. So, and that's approximately about 15 hours of the, that we're working on, or that code enforcement works on that. And I'll turn it over to Brandon for the engineering, and then if you guys have any questions for either of us, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll try to be brief. So I'm gonna break this down into sewer projects, streets projects, and then miscellaneous. So over the last quarter, the sewer departments, Hayes Avenue project, that is substantially complete. We just had the contractor out there doing some repairs for curb and gutter installation across the roadway where we had some drainage issues, that I will hopefully correct that standing water issue that Brian brought to our attention. The project closeout is expected sometime in June. The lift station project, we are working through the final stages of the property acquisition at the lift station site. There's an historical easement record that both the engineering and legal team are working through, but really no hiccup, so we're expecting that to be closed out here pretty soon to advance that project. IIPA funding nomination forms were submitted for three projects. Again, these are funding, potential funding forms that have to be submitted if the city wants to seek loan funding through the state. Those projects were the lift station, the Class A sludge at the wastewater treatment plant, and then the Prairie Hill Sewer, which we've got a couple of different names, Top Die Sewer, but essentially here for an avenue all the way down Prairie Hill to the wastewater treatment plant. And finally, the IIPA sewer rate study that was approved a couple of months ago, I believe, has been completed, and one of our engineers, Carolene, who completed the report, will be presenting that to the council on June 2nd, so coming up here in a couple of weeks. Streets, over the past quarter, we submitted, staff submitted a five-year streets recommendation that was ultimately approved by the council. The inlets and catch basin repairs projects, along with ADA ramp upgrades, were, is substantially complete with just minor punch list items, items remaining. The final project closeout is expected sometime in June. The Manchester Road project, which, if you recall, is the rebuilt Illinois funds that have to be spent by, or contract has to be awarded by June 30th of this year. Been doing a lot of back and forth with IDOCs, but ultimately, we did get their final review comments last week, so Fairgram is turning those around. We're expecting to be out for advertisements here in the next few weeks, with ultimate bid opening and contract award taking place sometime in the third week of June. And then finally, the city staff has worked through a DCE, DCEO grant reimbursement. This was a grant that the city joined with Winnebago County as the host applicant back a couple of years ago to seek $100,000 in reimbursement for the industrial park roadway improvements. If you recall, those were done, I believe, in 2021, maybe 2020. All of the supporting documentation was submitted to the county, and they are working through the Illinois DCEO for the final approval. So hopefully, if there's no issues, the city will be getting $100,000 reimbursed for that grant. And then miscellaneous projects, the Charles Street Park right across the street. Fairgram submitted the joint permit application and hydrologic and hydraulic report to IDNR. That is just basically to prove that we are not causing any negative impacts to the floodplain, floodway. They will review that and then tell us if we need additional hydraulic recording or. The Turtle Creek floodplain issue, staff continues to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers, Illinois State Water Survey, and FEMA to seek alternatives to hopefully limit the amount of floodplain floodway increases that FEMA is currently proposing with their, their upcoming maps. But no major updates there. And then continued assists with, as Shana said, various permit site development reviews, a KFA10 development meetings, Slat's meetings, and then monitor active construction projects. And then Fairgram is also continuing to seek fund, funding assistance for various environmental streets and sewer projects.
I know we had talked in one of our meetings, I want to bring up about lot sizes. You know, everybody, you know, the problems we have with lot sizes, once a house is tore down, we have to vacate the lot. You know, you just leave the lot there and the neighbors get half and half or whatever. I, I like to see it where as long as you don't change the footprint, you know, whatever, whatever size the house is, as long as you don't change that, you can rebuild on that footprint. You know, I know with our lots in a lot of these towns in the down here area and up there on the west side, that the lots are too small, Long Gardner, they're too small, but to rebuild on there. But I believe that we should change that in our code where, where if you, you know, as long as you don't take more space, you know, fine, you know, rebuild on the same footprint. That's just a thought.
I will, I'll jump in and tell you that definitely exists in some of the communities around here. I run into that before, that what you're suggesting definitely exists in some of the neighboring communities.
You like that?
You can argue it either way, so I, I'm not even gonna say yes or no on it, but I personally, yes. I guess I will say that, yes, I do. I wasn't going to, I was gonna try and stay neutral and not say it because I'm the first person to talk, but, but yeah, you know, it, it, there's a double edged sword to it, because with zoning, you're trying to sculpt growth and handle things. But this particular one, in my opinion, factors all the old parts of town where, you know, like if you go to Rockford, for example, a great example would be like just east of Swedish American North Rockford Avenue, streets like that. If that house burns down, technically, it doesn't meet the new zoning requirements. So, you know, but the entire street is full of them, so, you know, they, a lot of the zoning has these little tweaks that you're suggesting. So like I said, it, it does exist. I run into it all the time with my job.
I like the idea of not having a vacant lot, which we have, and we've, we've paid so much money to, to, for asbestos rebate and to tear houses down and everything else where, and then when we get done, what do we got a vacant lot? I like the idea where we can rebuild back on it. You know, I mean, because this downtown isn't going to change, and the west side is not going to change that much either. All right, anything else? Let's, we'll move on. Go ahead.
Do we have anything for Chief Peace? I know you said you had.
Yeah, Chief, sure.
I see it's 5:25. I know he's gotta go, so.
Sure, Chief, you want?
Do you have anything? If not.
This is birthday coming up. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. All right, well, thanks for coming. All right, and then we'll move on to unfinished business, discuss approval ordinance 2848, amending it Chapter 18 business by adding Article 12 residential mental property resignation, registration.
I'd like to make a motion that we lay this agenda item over.
Okay.
My, do I need to state how far out and lay it over, Roxanne?
No, I mean, I think that we'll be ready with the revisions by the first meeting in June.
Give a second.
If you wanted to do that.
I was, I was gonna leave it vague if we can.
You could leave it vague, that's fine.
I'd like to leave it vague. Okay, second.
Tracy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, anybody opposed? New business, discuss approve, discuss and/or motion items. Discuss approval ordinance 2849, amending section 6-82, classification, scope, number, fees for Article 3 retail license and Chapter 6 alcohol beverages regarding Class BG license. Motion.
Motion.
Say.
Okay.
Can I, can I start by asking Roxanne if she can give us the, did you agree on this?
Sure, so this ordinance was drafted at the request of members of council regarding some of the issues that owners of locations that have a BG license have been bringing to the city about the inability to have other games at their facility and the inability to have food vendors in the parking lot or other things. So the ordinance that is before you now would amend, one, a, it looks like it's just a clerical error in one of the paragraphs in the existing ordinance, but also would strike the requirement that licenses could not, license holders of BG licenses could no longer have patio or beer gardens. And there's a caveat to that that I'll mention in a moment. But also striking the requirement that other types of games would otherwise be prohibited. So with this amendment, really, any other type of games would be permitted on the premises, including what we currently have, pool tables and dartboards. With regard to the beer garden, one of the things that staff has mentioned is for a number of these BG locations, they're in our smaller strip centers, they are, square footage is typically limited. So the ability to just physically have a patio or beer garden because of required side yard or front yard setbacks, that might actually be impossible for every location. Now, we've drafted the ordinance such that a location would still be able to apply, but it makes clear that the application itself would need to be in conformance with Chapter 118 zoning in order to be approved by the liquor commission. So that was the only real caveat that we could think of to put in the ordinance to ensure that even though a BG may have the ability to apply for an outdoor beer garden, because of the logistics of the site, they may not be able to actually be approved for an outdoor beer garden. Again, if it was a standalone location and wasn't surrounded by a number of other businesses, then that might be different where an outdoor beer garden may be possible. One location that I was thinking of would be like Anna Maria's, if they were just a BG, you know, they might be able to reconfigure their site in some way to have the ability to have an outdoor beer garden. But this is what we have drafted for the council's consideration. One of the questions that was brought to my attention early on by Commissioner Edelman was, well, do we really even need the Class BG license anymore? Or should we really just treat everything as a Class A or a Class AA? And the reason why I think that you should still have a, or consider having a Class BG license is because your Class BG gaming facilities are really just that, they're gaming. You are not receiving many sales in food and beverages, and so it does make sense. You are not receiving, um, many sales in food and beverages, and so it does make sense to have a different license classification as opposed to a full-blown restaurant that may also have gaming or a full-blown bar that may also have gaming. I can answer any questions that anybody may have.
So you basically made this one look like the class A?
Yes, in, in the allowance for other types of games and events, yes.
I remember when a gentleman that come here, Sal, I think he was, last time he came here, he wanted a food truck out for, that's why this all started, was about a food truck. And I remember that they, they also wanted to have, uh,
Bags.
Bags, bag tournaments in the parking lot, and they wanted to have, uh, uh, karaoke night, and they wanted to have, uh, it was something else, or Trivial Pursuit night. They wanted all them, and they, which was prohibited at the time, and I don't, you speak on it?
I'm just sitting and listening to you.
No, I mean, that's what this all started.
Yeah, no, that's what brought it up. I mean.
I mean, that's, now we got to figure out, do we want that where they can have all them? And then, but there's still, there's still the caveat that says 51% has to be from food to have a class, or liquor to have a class one, and class A, I guess you call it, and there's no way they can be 51%.
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, if a place wants to have a food truck, they should be able to have a food truck. If a place wants to have a karaoke bags tournament, go for it, right? I've said it last time, we've got Hard Rock down there pulling in National Axe soon to come, Hope Chunk, who knows what they're going to be pulling in. We've got to do something to help these guys stay relevant, something to keep people in the extra 25, 30 minutes, one more beer, one more beer, spend the extra money, you know, that, that's kind of my standpoint on it. As far as like the beer patio garden goes, I'm 100% agreeance with what Roxanne is saying. If they have the ability and the space to be able to do it, they should be able to. If they don't, then they, they can't, obviously. They have to follow the zoning of the lot. It makes complete and total sense to me. You know, I mean, at the end of the day, guys, I know that this is a, a five-person panel. We can put it to a vote, it is what it is. I don't, you know, it's not the end of the world thrown at us. It's something I feel like people should be able to do.
Brian, what do you say?
What?
Change this or keep the same?
The BG should be different than the other, everybody else, because like you said, 51%.
Yeah. I would, okay, yeah, you're right. I, there's another thing that I just thought about is, once you go outside the building, that's a whole different ballgame. If you have karaoke inside there, or if you have trivia pursuit inside there, that's one thing, you know, you have a pool table and you got a dartboard now, if you have that inside. Once you start outside the building, most of these places don't have, park, they've got parking lot and they got somebody else's supposed to be parking there, and here they got bags out there. Um, I don't know. Kenny, whatever you, what do you think?
I have no problem with this, with the changes that have been made. I think we need to keep the A license separate, but I have no problem with these changes as far as what they end up putting on the parking lot. To put too much in the parking lot, they can't get customers in.
So you don't, you don't think they should go in the parking lot?
I don't have a problem with the changes as they've been made in the ordinance. And I, I don't have a problem with them being out in the parking lot for a bags tournament if they have the space to do it. Like I say, if they don't, the only thing they're losing is their own customers because they can't get into, put the bags anyway.
I pretty much echo, um, Ryan on this, you know, I, I feel like, you know, the way that we've got it written for the most part, that, you know, they should be able to do that stuff. Um, you know, having the, the separate A and BG license, I'm, I'm fine with having the two different licenses. I like that they're going to be much closer now, you know, again, to echo, if you don't have room for patio beer garden, then you can't have it. But if you have room, if you're in the, the strip center out there on Prairie Hill Road, you've got two slots places and they want to get permission from their landlord to take up three parking stalls and have bags, that's up to the landlord. That's not up to us, in my opinion. Um, so that's, that's between them and the landlord. So the only thing that is different in here versus what has come up, that says that karaoke can't happen, and is there, do we need anything in here about food trucks specifically? Or is that just automatically fall under our existing rules for food trucks?
Does this fall under your food truck application?
Okay, so that doesn't need to be in here. So then the only, the only thing that we discussed that is in here, it says that you can't have karaoke.
What's karaoke? I mean, I mean, really, what's karaoke? People sing inside a bar?
Right.
Probably singing very bad at that time, but.
I'm just saying, that's the only thing that was mentioned as we were going around, and that is on here as a pro, as, as prohibited.
And I can, I can amend the ordinance if someone wants to make a motion to strike that.
Make a motion to strike prohibiting. What do you have to do for it?
Well, I had noticed too with the music system, when Sal came in, he was saying that they all have the touch tones anyway, so you might as well take that out too.
All right, so in other words, well, yeah, wasn't it jukebox or something? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so live music, DJ, karaoke are prohibited on license premises.
So do you want to just strike that entire sentence?
Yeah.
Or do you want to disallow live music or a DJ?
I would strike the entire sentence, but I'm only one of five.
You guys are driving, so just tell me what you're talking about.
Yeah, I didn't say the full first sentence. Live music, DJ, and karaoke are prohibited.
I just need a, um, motion for that.
Need a motion to strike the first sentence in subsection B, live music, DJ, and karaoke are prohibited on the license premises. We'll sign out that.
Do you want, just, if I could just ask for a clarification? So right now, the ordinance, it does allow there to be a music system, which is what Tracy was referring to. I would suggest rather than just striking the first sentence, we just strike that entire sub-paragraph B so that the ordinance doesn't address music whatsoever. That way license holders would be able to have whatever music they wanted. Is that okay? Okay.
Second amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, instructor B. All right, um, I guess that's pretty much it, huh?
Well, you just need a motion to approve it as amended.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we need a motion to approve the ordinance number 2849. Get a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Tracy.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderton?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Uh, no, I don't think it makes any difference, but, um, I think they should stay inside the building, that's my, my feeling. Whatever, okay, three, two, and it passes. Discuss approve resolution 6622, authorizing the city to publish, uh, notice of sale surplus city property, uh, by way of alternative methods of sale. Get a motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
That's for nine, ten, Angersaw?
Yes. Roxanne, can you best recount her process on this lot behind the law enforcement?
Sure. My understanding is that we're not able to obtain an appraisal for this lot, and so state statute requires another resolution than the, um, passed by the council to provide for a, um, alternative method of sale. The city did try to sell this property by a public auction on, back in 2021, that also did not work. So what you'll be doing with the passage of this resolution is it will be published in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks, then the city can receive essentially a bid for any monetary amount. It doesn't have to be for a minimum bid, but in order to do so, you would need to pass this resolution. There is a party interested in this property, and so this is the mechanism by which we would be able to sell the property to this individual.
This property we've been cutting for how many years? Five?
One and a half.
But we've been cutting every year and it's, um, you can't build on it and it's no good to the city that, um, so we're, what we're doing is getting it off our hands, more or less.
Does this fall into the same thing we were talking about earlier, it's just too small to build on?
Yeah, well, this is, no, this is in the floodplain.
It's in the floodway.
Floodway, so there's nothing they can do with it now because there's nothing on it to begin with, and so they.
And to be clear, Mayor, the, when we do get an interested bid, that's from the council.
Okay, yeah, and it's, um, it's a way of getting rid of some of these properties that nobody wants, you know, because they don't want to pay taxes on it, this gets it on tax roll, whatever. They can't build on it anyway, they're going to probably make a parking lot out of it. Okay, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss approve flow technique, ICN service contract for seltzer blowers, uh, three HTS 2500s not to exceed 2500. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Who wants it? Jeff got this?
Yep, I got it. Uh, we have the three blowers, the turbo blowers in our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, last year we did servicing on them through flow techniques. Uh, they, they authorized repair service center for those. There's still some warranty left on them. Um, there's a lot of electronics, so they bring in a, a computer box, actually puts up to it, and then it goes on the internet and goes to Europe, I believe, to a technician, so the technician's there, plus the technician's reviewing the computer software programming. Um, each year, we did it last year, we should do it every year. Um, I mean, those blowers are two, three hundred thousand a piece, so just managing and maintaining our system, because it's really hard to tell if there is something wrong with them until there's a complete failure, and we definitely don't want that.
Okay, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Yes, discuss, discuss approve hiring Aaron Miller for the wastewater treatment department at a rate of $21 an hour. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Tracy, uh, Jeff?
Uh, new hire, we did, been through some interviews, we interviewed four people, um, uh, well, we interviewed six people, I guess, we got down to the four top ones. Uh, Aaron seems like a very young, likable guy, and I think hope that he'll fit into our team very well. I think he should. I don't have any reason to not feel. We've had this position open since September, I believe.
Okay, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Yes, discuss regarding various road projects and IDOT funding sources available. Motion, or discuss, go ahead. Who's got this?
I can see it up there, and Brandon is prepared, and Steve is sure that I missed anything. Uh, this is the second page out that I gave you, and the top of this single page, it says IDOT project planning. Uh, what we have done is the first five categories at the top of the page are various funding pots that are available from time to time. Uh, the one that has most recently come up that seems very flexible, it's really more of a call for projects that are in the area, um, and we're convinced that this is more of a, the government is looking at ways of all the different projects that are moving and maybe going to consolidate some of them, so we want to make sure that we get some projects into this because we think it's going to, uh, maybe take the place of some of these government funding sources. But in short, um, the reason that we are, uh, bringing this before the council is that this federal, um, or I'm sorry, this IDOT local project funding just got announced last week, and the applications are due June 1st. It's not a difficult application, uh, but we certainly didn't have time to get a cost proposal from Fairgram and get something on the agenda for today, so, uh, I'll probably just give you this to chew on and then follow up with a, a quick call around this week. Um, but I think that we have identified four projects that make a lot of sense to put into this pot. Um, the first two projects are the ones that we feel like are the most critical and make the most sense for this pot of money. Uh, three and four on this list are probably not eligible, not project ready enough, but they are projects that have been on our, you know, on our list for a long time, and I think that we want to get them into this local project funding pool, if you will, the funnel. So we have a, a training coming up in Dixon that Brandon and Shawna are going to be attending. We've got a couple of questions at the bottom of the page that are really for those folks, uh, but then the bottom three questions on this page are really for you guys. The, the first one is, do you agree with the way that we have these projects carved out in the top four priorities, with Willow Brook from State Line to Prairie Hill being priority number one, um, Gardner from Highway Two to South Park being priority number two? Um, and that is really just because it makes the most sense for this, these various pots that are available. Then the Charles Street Park would be on the list as number three, and then, uh, the South Bluff and Prairie Hill bike path would be on the list as priority number four. So really, it's, uh, are we all in agreement that Willow Brook from the State Line, uh, which is going to catch a lot of casino traffic, all the way to Prairie Hill is our priority number one? That's the piece I think that, you know, I'll be circling back with and finding out, is there another road project in our city limits that anybody on this board thinks is worth, um, you know, maybe competing with that as a number one priority? The reason that Gardner is on here is our number two priority, is that, uh, really if we want Highway Two to South Park to get redone and ever get turned into a two lane, we have to put into IDOT that, hey, you know, we have this, this connectivity issue, uh, with bike paths between Beloit and Rockton where this road needs to be bikeable and walkable, and so this is a SLATS project that comes into place, um, they would probably be 500 to a million dollars in this project with us. TJ threw a million out there, but I'm going to go on the lesser half of that and say, I think we could count on 500 to a million. So that stays on the list because making Gardner walkable, crossable, bikeable, um, it's kind of always been there, and now we have three different pots that could potentially help us fund that. The folks at IDOT also kind of helped us make this priority list, so it doesn't just come from Brandon and I, Shawna, you know, making stuff up and see, um, it kind of comes from IDOT, so keep that in mind as well, that, that this is how this funnel's been created. And South Bluff and Prairie Hill bike path is on here because, um, this was the ITOP grant that we went after in the fall. We still have not found out if we've gotten that or not. Usually we would have heard by now, those have been announced, but we think that, uh, maybe this is being held off until this call for projects gets done. I think there's some moving parts of federal and state level with funding pots. So this is what you've got in front of you. Don't have to say anything today, please chew on it. Brandon, am I missing anything or Steve?
So the only thing that I would speak to, this IDOT, uh, local projects, application is due June 1st, so that's why we're, we're really pushing this, um, it is a 100, as of right now, it is 100% funded, um, through the state. So there would be no matching funds on this. Um, the Willow Brook Road project from the State Line to Prairie Hill, um, what we would be seeking is funding for phase one and phase two engineering. So, um, the, the funding source itself is eligible for construction, but usually if you're applying for construction funding, you need to have a design done so you're not, you know, making your project last or take three to four years to get done. When they release this funding, they want to give it out and they want it to be spent and they want to complete projects. So, um, all of these larger roadway projects, they're more geared toward federal and state funded projects, which means we have to follow their guidelines when we design these, and it's not just like a simple MFT resurfacing project where we submit it to IDOT for two weeks and we get approval. Uh, there's a lot of hoops that you got to jump through, and so if we can get that engineering effort funded, we can have more attractive applications for various other, um, grant funds like, uh, TARP, which is the Truck Area Rep, Truck Access Route Program, um, EDP, which is Economic Development Program. There's a whole list of federal and state funds that we can go after in future if we just do a, a little bit of the engineering workup and get some, quote, shovel-ready projects.
Why says, why says short notice?
We don't know. Um, we, I talked with our, our grant specialist, Bridget Stocks, today. She, and she's very close with a lot of people at IDOT and even at the, uh, USDOT level, and she is not really giving any sort of, um, explanation on why we only have, you know, three weeks to pull together grant applications. The nice thing is, as Sonya said, the application itself is not, there's not a lot that goes into it, um, project description and an overall cost estimate. It's not like some of the other, um, It's not like some of the other programs where you have to have letters of support, you have to have board resolutions, or CIPs adopted to submit the projects. You don't have to have any environmental, historical, biological clearances before you apply for these. Again, it's just a call for projects. This could turn into them consolidating certain grant funds, and this is just now going to decide which projects they're allocating which money to. This is a new, a new thing. So there's a lot of unknown right now, but we don't want to miss the deadline, and it's not a heavy lift to get some applications for what they're asking.
Anybody else? Randy, you and Pam, if you guys want to stay around after the meeting and talk about that, willing to stay after the meeting, but we're going to get a motion adjourned.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned.